You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place I send my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched with the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening. I'd like to call this February 23rd, 2015 meeting of the Fayetteville City Council to order and ask the Pastor James Baker from Caramo Memorial Baptist Church to come forward. Please lead us with an invocation. If everybody would please stand, remain standing, and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following.
Let's pray. Father, we ask your guidance and blessing on our elected council representatives and on the city staff members who are meeting tonight to handle the public's business. We ask that a frank and open discussion be possible but without loss of trust or harmony. But while we're asking for that blessing, we can't forget to be grateful for what you've already given us. So tonight, we thank you for the opportunity to live and work and make friends here in Fayetteville. We have here a unique blend of big city and small town, of the traditional and the cutting edge, of long-term residents and recent arrivals. Despite some areas of real concern to us all, this is still a great place to be, a good place to raise kids and grandkids. Help us not to lose sight of that and give us grateful hearts, hearts that appreciate the opportunity to be part of this place at this point in time. We thank you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Baker, I know you wear several hats, but tell us something about the mission at Carroll Memorial Baptist.
Glad to, Mayor. We are located at the intersection of Camden Road and Cumberland Road, thereby the new traffic circle in Massey Hill. The church started out several years ago, back when the mills were still in Massey Hill, in what was then called Lake Dale Village as a community church. The mills are all gone now, but we are still basically a community church, active in the Massey Hill Community Watch. We are lucky to have the support and friendship of good civic-minded people like Stella Mullen and Bill Passick and a number of others. We have outreach ministries that include support for the Baptist Children's Homes in Moore County next door, active support for Operation In As Much here in town, and also a ministry to older adults. We are glad to be in Fayetteville and glad to be part of Massey Hill.
Thank you, sir. And for those of us that may not be aware, what is one of the other hats you wear?
I am a prosecutor in the District Attorney's Office, and I am serving a two-year term as Chair of the Cumberland County Board of Elections.
That's the hat that I was speaking of, sir. Thank you so much for joining us. Counsel, at this time, I want to go into the recognitions announcements and recognitions. I'll ask or recognize Councilmember Art to read a proclamation and ask Mr. McRath if he would come forward, please.
The proclamation is from the Governor of the State of North Carolina in regards to Human Relations Month 2015, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas the state of North Carolina believes in the dignity and worth of every individual regardless of race, creed, gender, national origin, or handicapping condition; and whereas the state of North Carolina promotes and maintains a spirit of goodwill and mutual respect among individuals, groups, races, and persons of differing social and economic status and religious benefits; and whereas the people of North Carolina work daily to make our diverse communities stronger; and whereas the state and people of North Carolina have made tremendous progress in human relations in the years since the establishment of the Good Neighbor Council and its successor, the Human Relations Commission; and look forward to continued progress against the serious challenges that still face us; and whereas the state of North Carolina owes its appreciation to all the citizens who have contributed and continue to contribute to the advancement of mutual understanding, fairness, justice, and equal opportunity for all; and whereas the state and people of North Carolina embrace and celebrate change and diversity and reject all manifestations of racial, sexual, religious, and disability-based prejudice, discrimination, and hatred. Now therefore I, Pat McCroy, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim February 20th, 2015 as Human Relations Month in North Carolina and commend its observance to all citizens. A witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and affixed the great seal of the state of North Carolina at the Capitol in Raleigh this 13th day of January in the year of our Lord 2015 and at the Independence of the United States of America, the 239th. Signed, Pat McCroy."
Well, I want to present this to Mr. McRath for his hard work. How long have you been with the city?
Since 2001.
Doing some great work in the Human Relations Department. This is for the wall of the office.
Yes.
All right?
All right.
And for those of you who thought that was a lot to say, that's mighty fine print on here. That font size must be about a six. So anyway, that's for the office. Now, I've got the honor of doing this up here. On behalf of the Fayetteville City Council, I want to thank you for your years of service. You retire. This is your last city council meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I want to present to you a city coin with all the council members' names on it, the city sealed on the front, and thank you on behalf of the city council and 208,000 citizens that you've served. So thank you so much, Ron.
Thank you. I'm blessed to do that.
And this is the certificate of appreciation, and my font's a little bit bigger, but I'm not going to go into it. But just say thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
I won't take any more time, but I just want to say thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to have served this city, this community, and this county and this state, and I will continue to serve even though I will not be on anybody's payroll. I don't plan to do that anymore. My wife's sitting in the back, and she's going to make sure I don't do that anymore because we want to visit the grands. But we certainly want you to know that we won't stop doing good things, hopefully for this community, and anytime you need me, call on me. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you very much. Counsel, this time we'll move to item 4.0, which is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if it please the council, I would move that we approve the agenda with the amendment that item 7.0 consent be moved up to be item 01. And that item, an additional item be added to the consent agenda. It will be 7.10, and that item will be titled, "Request a Legal Representation of a City Employee."
Second.
Second.
Mr. Crisp, counsel, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. So item 7.0 was moved up to this point. That's the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment of item 7.10, and that is, "Request a Legal Representation of a City Employee." Second.
Mr. Colvin, second. Discussion. Mr. Moan, I thought that was a vote. All right. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous as well. Item 5.01, Staff Reports. We'll hear from Ms. Rebecca Rogers Carter on the Strategic Plan Midyear Report. Welcome, Ms. Carter.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Rebecca Rogers Carter, the city's Strategy and Analytics Performance Director. Counsel, the midyear performance report on your agenda this evening reviews the strategic priorities set forth in the fiscal year 2015 strategic plan and reports the progress made toward each priority item. On your dais, you will find a resource guide for your strategic planning retreat this coming Thursday. That's right. Looks like this. The midyear report is actually included under the first tab. Tonight, I'll review just a few of the highlights in the report. I'm going to run through this pretty quickly so that we might have a few minutes in the end for questions. This proverb is one that some of you may have heard before. It also helps explain the city's strategic planning process. It speaks to the reality that the quality of life that we experience tomorrow is ultimately dependent on the investments the community makes today. It states, "The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, and the second-best time is now." It's a call to action to plant the seeds. The takeaway for tonight, overall takeaway for tonight, is that as the policymaking body for the city, council should be congratulated on rolling up your sleeves, grabbing a bag of seeds, and planting them, planting those investments, so that we can achieve the community's vision. The vision is what we hope to achieve through our actions today. In fiscal year 15, the city council revised the vision to include a focus on being a regional shopping destination and on a beneficial military presence. We also place an emphasis on the opportunities for individuals and families to thrive. To get there, the city council uses the strategic plan to set the direction and define the goals for the city of Fayetteville. The city manager's office has the overall responsibility of ensuring that the city's strategic plan is implemented. Our strategic plan has five main elements. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time going through each of these elements, as we're going to focus on the performance results in each of the goal areas. The report before you does contain an overview of our strategic planning process that highlights our work to incorporate more input from citizens and staff to shape the priorities of the plan. Through this process, city council narrows down the focus and defines the priorities for the fiscal year. They consider things like staff capacity levels, budget, and the overall impact that each of these items will have. Ultimately, as everyone knows, the city council settled on five top policy priorities for fiscal year 2015: police staffing, the citywide economic development program, a comprehensive land plan, study and plan for park and recreation capital project funding, and a citywide customer service initiative. So thinking back to the seed in the tree example, how does that seed get sown? The city's strategic planning model aligns the programs and spending and the long-term goals. It's an organizational roadmap that also provides accountability for results. The Pride Program is a team structure that's designed to assign roles and build accountability: goal champions, goal teams, the data analytic team. They were all formed to really form the foundation and the systems to collect, measure, analyze data, to evaluate it, and report on our progress. Everyone plays a very critical role, and I would do it injustice if I did not thank them for their commitment. Especially the goal champions, they take a leadership role at moving forward a lot of these initiatives, and so I want to take a moment to thank them very much for their hard work. Every city program, every objective, every performance measure and strategic initiative is aligned to your strategic plan and the city's overarching goals. We also institutionalized a data analytics team. We have 10 core members representing a cross-section of all the city employee, city departments. The team worked very hard to develop performance measure standards as we moved forward, and this fall, the team, the DAT team, actually conducted the city's first performance measure integrity audit so that we can improve the measurement process and methodology. They are a phenomenal team, and I thank them for their work. The report, recommendation, and after-action is going to be provided to you at your upcoming retreat. So why build the system? If we were to ask a business owner how successful her business was last year, she might refer to her return on investment. She might refer to a profit and loss statement. It's easy to tell how a business is performing because there's a defined way, a score, so to speak, to recognize that success. It is not easy to tell so much for the city. The city is deliberately moving from a trust-us city government to one that is dedicated to transparency and accountability. For the performance management system, this helps us establish our accountability for the organization. And secondly, the system reports results to the residents, thus providing transparency of our operations. And finally, performance measurement highlights the areas that are underperforming, thereby identifying areas ripe for quality improvement initiatives. And over time, this, of course, would lead to a higher quality of city services. Not only do we just need the facts, we need to improve, and we need to tell our story when we do so. So at this point, I'll transition into the highlights of the fiscal year 15 midyear performance report because we all know that what gets measured gets done. City council goals. These outline the path our organization must follow in order to reach the community's vision. For each goal, council identified specific strategic initiatives and performance measures that tell us how effective and efficient we are being in moving the city goals forward. So safe and secure community. This is a fundamental quality to our quality of life and economic vitality for our city. The strategic initiatives under this goal ensure preservation of life, property, and the environment, and a commitment to leading the community's problem-solving efforts. We must work assertively to address the systematic issues that lead to crime and disorder. Under this goal, the report includes police and fire performance results and updates on specific initiatives. You'll also notice that many of these initiatives will take years to fully impact our performance. The report includes significant advancements which increase law enforcement collaboration through the use of their sector lieutenant models. It includes successes we are seeing with the powerful video that decision points and educational program impacting hundreds of Fayetteville students. We also report that what we've achieved through our community engagement initiatives such as Stop the Violence, the Kids Bike Rodeo, the Unity March, and the various community meetings that we have. It provides an update on the newly established red light camera program, which we'll hear about this evening, and the cars program, both of which help to ensure safety on our city streets. Updates are provided on the Crime Information Center and the partnership with the U.S. Department of Justice Diagnostic Center. And finally, we show progress on council's top policy priority to reduce police, to resource police staffing. Using a trend analysis and taking into consideration attrition, BLET classes, and the phased budget, we can track progress being made toward increasing the police capacity. And like so many of these initiatives, it is multi-year in nature and has many variables that impact the headcount on a daily basis, but progress is being made. The second goal is that the city of Fayetteville will have a strong, diverse, and viable economy. The top policy priority under this goal was to establish a broader citywide economic development program. The Economic and Business Development Department has been established, and recruiting for all positions have been accomplished. The target start date is March 1st. The study of North Murkison Road is pending direction on Shaw Heights development, and the establishment of the task force has been tabled until further direction from city council. Redevelopment of Murkison Road Catalyst Site 1, which we'll hear about today, continues with acquisition of parcels and the demolition of dilapidated structure. And also this year, Cultural Resource Secretary Susan Klutz toured Fayetteville to see firsthand how historic preservation tax credits help to revitalize the community and bring jobs into the area. Counsel, your third goal for the city is to be a well-designed city and with high-quality infrastructure. And here, we focus on the quality of our community's built environment with programs like code enforcement, inspections, zoning, planning, streets, and engineering. Performance measures such as the Quality of Streets Index, building inspections, and code violations are included in the report. We've also provided an update on our Ramp program. Ramp is a success because it acts as a huge deterrent factor for code violations and nuisance abatement. Fayworks and Fayfixit were refined and launched to improve customer service. Fayworks is what we used to call Cityworks. It's designed to boost employee efficiency, reduce the wait time, and ensure transparency for our citizens. Fayfixit Application, or what we used to call C Click Fix, is an online tool available to residents to help improve the appearance of Fayetteville and makes reporting problems just a quick click away. And finally, city council funded a comprehensive planner position effective January 1st. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan is a multi-year initiative that will span through FY16. The fourth goal of the city is to be a highly desirable place to live, work, and recreate. This goal ensures that the city promotes a good quality of life for residents and visitors. We have a growing population with young professionals and families moving here to enjoy the community surrounding them. We've included performance measures here that are relevant for this goal. City council's top policy priority was to study and plan for park and recreation capital funding. The new pool at the Westover Rec Center was funded, which is on target with construction and plans to open in the midsummer. However, the Parks and Rec Capital Master Plan has not been funded, and discussion continues into the city council retreat later this week, hence the blue pending indicator in your report. Of course, the construction of the multimodal center is underway and will be complete in the spring of 2016. The Linear Park Trail is growing, the Capeville River Trail is expanding, and that's both underway. City council and staff continue to proactively engage in the continuum of care with the local nonprofits and the VA for housing solutions for the area's homeless. City council recognizes that when leaders are moving in the same direction and the organization has the capacity to complete its directives, we will all get there faster. And to that end, we've included the city's retention rate, per capita tax burden, and the city's bond rating, among other performance measures. We're aligning our space needs with improved customer service, and an update on that project is included in your report. Earlier in the presentation, I provided an overview of the city's performance measurement and plans to further align that program with resident expectations. That is also a city's strategic initiative in this goal area. As part of the city council's strategic planning process, we've hosted two Citizen Cafe conversations, and the reports are included in your resource guide for you to review. And city council will have an opportunity to review a short video that our corporate communications department is creating at your retreat this, excuse me, later this week. We've established a budget and evaluation and internal audit offices. The city's Core Value Awards was developed with Councilmember Jensen, serving as a liaison. Thank you. And the first award ceremony was held in January where many of you attended. We thank you. Finally, we've completed several studies with the Fayetteville Public Works and successfully consolidated our call centers. And last but the not least of the goals for the city council was that you wisely noted that the city on its own cannot achieve our vision, but it's going to take strong partnerships with others to get it done. City of Fayetteville doesn't just hear, we listen. City council's top policy priority in this goal area was to implement a citywide customer service program. Development Services, Engineering and Infrastructure, and Fire Inspectors were provided training and coaching in small focus groups through a consultant. The city also developed and delivered customized customer training modules through our OD&amp;T Department for specific departments, including transit and fire, and those programs are underway. The communications plan was drafted and will be complete with the input of the new corporate communications director when they come on board, hence the yellow indicator in your report, meaning that we've made progress but we're slightly behind schedule. City council will receive a report from the federal consultant next week at the March 2nd Work Session with regard to the partnership with the county and the chamber. So the strategic plan is charting the course for our community, and it's provided organizational focus and a method to prioritize resources. It's also a tool to track performance. Council's strategic planning retreat is vital to the continued success and progress that our city has experienced. So this year, council will focus in their retreat on the goal areas and the priorities for those goal areas this week. And as a reminder, the retreat will be held at the Botanical Gardens on February 26th, snow pending. And it is a public meeting, a one-day retreat this year. Fountain Works Consulting Firm will again facilitate, and I look forward to working with each of you as you develop your FY16 strategic plan. And that, counsel, concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers Carter. Counsel, any questions?
Council, any questions? Mr. Crisp.
Ms. Carter, um, it's on. She can hear me, you can't. You made a statement early on in your presentation that the task force, economic task force, was put on hold. Give me some clarification to that, please.
I think I will defer to Mayor Manager or Deputy City Manager, Small Tony.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. Yes, to answer that question, you might recall, I guess it was maybe about nine months ago when we discussed this as it relates to the establishment of the new department. The purpose for the task force originally was to partner with members in the community to try to figure out how best to proceed with economic development activities in the community. So certainly we can revisit that, I think with council's direction. However, we were strongly encouraged that we really stand up the Economic and Business Development Department, task it with the appropriate mission for what they are embarking on, and then at some future time, bring in other members of the community. We had gotten as far, members of council, with recommending names of individuals to serve on the task force. However, it never went anywhere, so to speak, with the existing council. So this is one of those projects that really spanned both councils. It started with the previous council, and then this particular council did not move forward with it. So we continued with the process of establishing the department.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, at some point, I would hope that we will revisit that issue, and I say that in the context that there are hundreds of successful business people in this community and successful community watch leaders, and a cross-section of people that have a vast reservoir of expertise that can be of benefit to this city, and I don't want us to rule them out in terms of being a conduit of information as we go forward with our economic development plans. I think we do a disservice not only to ourselves here, but to the city as a whole if we don't capitalize on the expertise that's out there in terms of successes as well as failures, and as well as capitalizing on that ability within the universities that we have here. That's the point I wanted to make. Thank you, Ms. Small Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Rebecca, thank you very much for the report. And I just, if you would, can you go back to the inspection slide that you had? Okay, one of the things, recently I had the chance to meet with the Home Builders Association and reference an issue, and Mr. Schuford attended, and I want to thank Mr. Schuford for being there. And they highlighted some very important issues to them, everything from customer service to timelessness permitting to, you know, re-inspections and things like that. And so I applaud Mr. Schuford, he's taken that for action, and we're going to try to work that. But when we talk about performance measures, a key performance measure that I don't see here is time. And I think you've got to have time as a performance measure on anything that we do to include on our efforts collectively from a strategic standpoint on implementing these things, so that, you know, we approved in our strategic planning session a year ago many of these things, and today we're still trying to work on those items. So I think time has to be a measure that we consider and that we track to make sure that we are getting these objectives accomplished in a timely manner. Thank you.
All right, you're very welcome. I will also say that during your strategic planning retreat and the follow-up session planned in March, we're actually going to walk through each goal area and further define that with what council feels are key performance indicators, so that we, when we do build a structure that would be outward-facing to citizens and to council, that we all understand sort of what those key indicators are for a dashboard and what the indicators might be sort of under the hood. So that discussion will be taking place, and also as a part of this next fiscal year strategic planning process, we're going to go delve into the areas of decision trees for those strategic initiatives that council wishes to see move forward. I think that will help build sort of a structure, strategy map to actually seeing initiatives move forward and building in that timeframe that I think you're speaking about.
That's exactly. I think when people can see, you know, it's one of the things I've always loved about watching construction. When you start a construction project, you see a plain piece of dirt, and then when you get through, you've got a building, you've got a product, you've seen something created and something that's accomplished. And so whenever we can demonstrate things in a constructive manner where people can see the progress made, I think that's very beneficial to all parties.
Agreed. We're moving the needle.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Colvin.
My question was for Deputy City Manager Small Tony. Yes, ma'am. So, Ms. Carter, I appreciate your presentation. And so, Ms. Small Tony, as you know, the economic development was priority number two, and for the first time in a long time, I think we've established our own internal department for some of those tasks. Have you, I understand that your office is going to be up and functioning by March one, will you brief us on what your top initial initiatives will be, or is that something you could kind of share with the general public right now?
Yeah, I think.
Some of the areas of concentration?
Right. Certainly, the highest priority will be developing an economic development strategic plan. And I think that's where the work, so to speak, of people in the community is vitally important, because they then can inform that strategic plan. So that would be the highest priority. And then we would move on to looking at some of these other projects that have kind of laid dormant, if you will, because we haven't had the staff to really move them forward, such as the Murkison Road Corridor, Bragg Boulevard Corridor, Cat Site One is another initiative. And then we will also be looking at how to better market, actually, the city of Fayetteville for economic development purposes, looking specifically again to those underutilized corridors that we have, as well as in the downtown area.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. McDougal.
Before you sit down, Ms. Small Tony.
I don't think I should go anyway.
Would you make sure that we somehow have that in writing, what your stages and plans are that you've just briefed us on? I'd like to see that, and so I can follow along with you.
Sure.
And also, I think Mr. Crisp, Councilman Crisp, talked about it, the other resources that are available in the community, and certainly, I know FSU, being an alumnus, you know, they have one of the finest business departments, MBA. And if we don't tap that resource, I think it would be kind of bad on our part, so I would urge you to do that.
Yes, and I would quite agree with you. I actually had the pleasure of meeting some of the staff members there on some other previous economic development projects that they had in mind, so certainly, I think the city is really blessed to have as many resources as we have.
I believe Mr. Tabacoli, I think he's still the department chair, and if not, if he is, I certainly have his number, I'll give it to you.
Please do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, seeing no other discussion, we'll move into the reports from the boards and commissions. And I ask our representative from the Board of Appeals and Dwellings to come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor and members of the city council, I am E. Kenneth Wells, Vice Chairman of the Board of Appeals on Dwellings and Buildings. The City of Fayetteville Board of Appeals on Dwellings and Buildings is an important part of the city's building and safety program. The Board of Appeals is a quasi-judicial body responsible for hearing and deciding appeals of issued city hearing orders related to directed corrections of violations of Chapter 14 of the City Code. Chapter 14 sets the minimum standards for buildings and dwellings. In deciding an appeal, the board may vary the application of any provision of Chapter 14 to any particular case when it is, in its opinion, the enforcement would constitute injustice and would be contrary to the spirit and purpose of the City Code or public interest, or when, in its opinion, the interpretation of the city staff should be modified or revoked. The appeal hearings are open to the public. However, testimony is restricted to the appellant and appellant's witnesses, city staff, city staff witnesses. The appellant is not required to be present at the appeal hearing. The appellant may also have a representative appear at the hearing to act on the appellant's behalf. Upon considering the testimony and evidence presented at the hearing, the board may either affirm, modify, and affirm, or revoke the hearing order. An appeal of the board's decision must be filed in Superior Court within 15 days from the receipt of notification of the board's decision. The Board of Appeals is composed of five regular members appointed by the city council for three-year staggered terms. Three members of the board constitute a quorum to conduct business. However, a vote of at least four members of the board is required to modify or revoke a hearing order. Board appeals hearings are held as needed on the first Thursday of each month at 6:00 in the Lafayette Conference Room. The members of the board are Mr. Paul Rodriguez, Board Chairman, Reverend E. Kenneth Wells, Vice Chairman, with members Ms. Beverly Keller, Ms. Maxine MacNeil, and Mr. Ronald Adams. Since 2010, there have been 11 appeals before the board, one each in 2010, and 11, six during 2012, and three in 2013, and one in 2014. The increase in the appeals for 2012 and 2013 are attributed to an increase in awareness and detection of blighted building violations. This then concludes my presentation. Thank you for the opportunity to share this report.
Thank you, Reverend Wells. Council, any questions for the football coach? Mr. McDougal.
You know him as a football coach. I know him as a bank attorney pastor. He is a pastor of one of our African Methodist Episcopal Zion churches, and we share together on this district. Just wanted to note that and lift him and his wonderful wife up today, Sister Mary. I bless you.
May I assume that you're putting some physical know-how in it, but you're also putting some spiritual?
Absolutely.
Know-how in it at the same time?
Absolutely.
Thank you for a concise report.
Let me tell you, as a former player for Coach Wells, he can put some physical in it, no question about it.
Thank you so much, Reverend Wells, for joining us. Council will move to item 6.02, that's the Ethics Commission Annual Report. Recognize the Chairman, Mr. Rennie Dees. Welcome.
Mayor, members of council, I'm Rennie Dees, and I'm here to provide you with the commission's annual report. In 2010, you established the Code of Ethics and appointed the Fayetteville Ethics Commission. It was intended to provide a increased confidence in city government.
Just scroll along here if you will.
Okay, thank you. And the code was revised in 2014. The council appoints the commission, and the purpose of the commission is to investigate complaints, render advisory opinions, hear complaints, and publish findings and recommendations regarding alleged violations of the City Code of Ethics by employees, board, or commission members, and/or appointed or elected officials. The commission meets as is necessary. There are five volunteer members of the commission. One is selected by the Cumberland County Bar, one is selected by the Sand Hills Chapter of Certified Public Accountants, one is selected from among the universities and colleges, Fayetteville State University, Methodist University, and Fayetteville Technical Community College. Two are selected by the council at large. The Ethics Commission is able to have the assistance of council, who just happens to be coincidentally a former city attorney. As the commission is presently constituted, appears on the slide, and you will note there that some of these terms are expiring very soon. Our activity report from 2010 to the present is listed on the next slide. In 2010, we issued one advisory opinion. In 2011, one advisory opinion, and four complaints, two were dismissed and two were determined to be without violation. In 2012, one advisory opinion. In 2013, two advisory opinions and three complaints, all three were dismissed. In 2014, none. We had no opinions and no complaints, and to date, we have had none. That speaks very highly of how the city of Fayetteville is governed by its ethical standards. I'd be happy to try to answer whatever questions you may have.
Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Dees, go back to your slide where you showed the expiration dates of your terms in office. That's everybody's going out on.
Well, you see, Mr. Crisp, you see there are two terms, the second term, some of the members, three members have second terms, and we cannot be, as I understand it, we cannot be reappointed. But the first-term persons can.
So of the five here, three of them will be going off the commission on 31 March.
That's correct.
Two are eligible for reappointment to a second term.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'll get with staff on who's got to make those appointments, whether it's.
Yes, sir.
The University of.
Thank you, Mr. Dees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council will move to 8.0, which is public hearing. For the public hearing, individuals wishing to speak at the public hearing should have signed up prior to the meeting tonight with the city clerk. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless your group wishes to appoint just one speaker. Time used in response to a question from a council member will not be counted against you or your time. Discussion following the public hearing will be limited to this body only unless someone from this chair recognizes you for a question or as a response to a question. So when you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the lights located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired, and again, due to policy, we are unable to extend that time. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have two speakers for this item. The first speaker is Mr. Ross Karash. Our next speaker is Mr. Richard Wiggins.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, members of the city council. I am Richard Wiggins, and my address is 202 Fairway Drive, Fayetteville North Carolina, 28305, I believe. I'm here tonight on behalf of Lafayette Cemetery Park Corporation. This is a rezoning issue, an application for rezoning from SL6 Single Family Residential District to local commercial, and with a conditional zoning attached to it. And of course, this came to the council on a appeal from two competitors. One was Lafayette Funeral Home just down the street from this particular location that is being applied for rezoning, and the other applicant, the other opposition came from Jurnigan and Warren Funeral Home. I don't know whether that opposition still exists. I understand from the Fayetteville Observer that it's been withdrawn, but in any event, it was from two competitors, and apparently, again, that. But in any event, it was from two competitors, and apparently, again, that opposition has died out, and is no longer viable. But if it is, I will simply say this, and very quickly, that I think this is a perfect fit for this particular location. There's twenty-six acres behind this property, which is already existing for the Lafayette Cemetery West on Rayford Road. This type of business, this is a $2 million project with a crematorium planned, and of course, we've got to come back to council, to the planning board and the council for the crematorium, because that requires a special use permit to construct that particular part of this project. Of course, this whole zoned area is, of course, commercial to a large extent, of course, to the side is the, to the, to the, to the east, to the west of this is, of course, the Pizza Hut and McDonald's. Then to the, to the east, of course, is, is, is a commercial zoning, CZ zoning in that particular area also. So the funeral home, I think, is a perfect fit for the area during the high areas of commercial travel up and down Rayford Road. This would not be a very high-traffic area during the commute areas. And so basically, we think it's a good fit. Recommend to the council that this be granted. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, be glad to respond.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Counsel will close the public hearing on that item. Is there any action?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that... On the public hearing, the zoning of the portion of the property of FS6 Single Family Residence Limited Commercial Conditioning Zoning District or to a more restrictive district located at 6701 Rayford Road and being the property of the Lafayette Cemetery, that that will, that motion would pass as written.
Okay, so that's the motion. Is there...
Just for the record, if you would note whether or not the four conditions are part of that, which are the hours and the limitation on uses.
Mr. Mayor, I would amend that to also consider those four conditions.
Okay.
There was a motion, Mr. Wright.
Yes, waiting on a second. Mr. Colvin? Any questions, counsel? Mr. McDougal?
Could we make sure that we state what those four conditions are? I think I see them, and I want to make sure, like, the site would be limited to a funeral home. Park and lot will be approximately eighty spaces plus stacking area. Is that correct?
You want to read the last two? You're on it. You're on it. Keep going.
Business hours from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with limited use, and visitation hours from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I know in our work session, I think I had a question about from 5:00 to 7:00. I asked what they were going to do, and I think somebody told me they were just going to go to lunch.
I remember that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDougal.
Is that true?
For putting that in the record. All right, counsel, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Shuford, welcome.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good to see you tonight. This particular code amendment will need to be tabled to your March 23 meeting because it was unable to be heard by the planning commission due to weather conditions last week.
March 23rd, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we table item 8.02, code amendment regarding the use of separation standards until March 23rd, as proposed by Mr. Shuford.
Second.
Madam Clerk, is that a regular public hearing night?
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right, there's a first and a second. Counsel, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford. Item 9.01, it's consideration of incentives for Sanderson Farms. Mr. McDougal.
Mr. Mayor, give me just a minute to get on the right page here.
I wanted to say some things.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, did you want to read those incentives while we're getting our places?
Yes, sir, ma'am. I do have a very short presentation.
Okay, go right ahead.
Mayor, members of council, as you will recall, the council did conduct a joint public hearing with the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners on February 2, 2015, to receive public comments on proposed economic development incentives for Sanderson Farms Incorporated. The joint public hearing was advertised in the Fayetteville Observer on January 23, 2015. The publisher's affidavit for the advertisement is included in your packet this evening. The basic terms of the Economic Development Incentives Agreement proposed by the city and advertised for the public hearing include the following. Sanderson Farms will spend at least $95 million to construct and equip a modern poultry-producing plant in the county's Cedar Creek Industrial Park, which is in the city of Fayetteville. The project will employ at least 975 employees. Within three years, not less than 60% of employees will be Cumberland County residents. The company will not contract with chicken producers within ten miles of the project or within one mile of the Cape Fear River in Cumberland County. The company will inform the city and county managers of any notices of violation it receives from the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources for any of its operations in Cumberland County. As a result, the city economic development incentives include the following. The city will grant, I apologize, the city will grant at Sanderson Farms a cash incentive equivalent to 70% of the city general property taxes paid by the company on the assessed value of the improvements constructed on the real and personal property and equipment used therein for each of the first ten years that the project complies with the terms of the agreement. The Fayetteville Public Works Commission will waive 50% of its facility's investment fee, referred to as the FIE on your slide, estimated to be $2.6 million, as long as the project complies with the terms of the agreement. The estimated total value of these cash incentive payments is $3.8 million. Incentives may also include an additional 5% general property tax grantback for the period of the agreement if the company achieves negotiated good-faith efforts, good-faith goals in hiring minority and women-owned businesses either located in Cumberland County or with any, within any of the adjoining counties to Cumberland County during the facility construction, and an additional 5% general property tax grantback if the company hires nonviolent felons for the period of the agreement. Finally, there may be additional economic development incentives as may incentives that may be agreed upon and negotiated by the parties. The county has proposed different economic incentives for the project, which were voted on and approved on February 16, 2015. The proposals of the city and county are consistent within a local agreement for the annexation of the Cedar Creek Industrial Park in 2013. We would ask, staff would ask that you consider the proposed incentives and whether to approve this offer to Sanderson Farms Incorporated, as described here tonight and as previously advertised in the newspaper.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. I'll go back to you since I saw your light first.
Well, I was ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor, if I'm in order.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve this offer that's being proposed for economic development incentives to Sanderson Farms Incorporated, as described in the notice and as described by our city attorney, and also the public hearing published in the Fayetteville Observer on January 23, 2015, and as described above, the subject to any such further terms as may be necessary or prudent.
Second. Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Wright. Counsel, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Moan.
I have a question. It might be for the attorney and for council. You know, the last bullet on the slide there, it says, you know, agreement may include other terms as negotiated. And, you know, we've had people for and against this process implant, both in the district eight I represent, outside district eight, inside the city, outside the city, and the biggest thing was the spray fields. We know where about 200 acres are. We don't know where the other 400 acres are. When looking at the PW service area, it appears they have a 20-inch sewer pipe right in the heart of this industrial, this industrial park. So I reached out to the Public Works Water Resource Division Chief and asked if they had the capacity to treat the water, and it was written back, got an update today, saw it when I got home, that they had looked at the capacity at the Rockfish Creek Plant, and they have determined that they do have the available hydrologic capacity to handle about a million gallons a day. And then if the Sandersons would pre-treat it, like they already are going to do before they spray it, and then they pump it into the PWC existing sewer service, then it would be a reduced cost because it wouldn't be so strong. And that's something that PWC and Sandersons Farm can negotiate. And so I would think we should at least ask them. I mean, that was the number-one complaint. I mean, the jobs are good, the business is good, Fortune 500, Fortune 100 Company, but that was the biggest concern. And the Honorable Rick Glaser, you know, he came before us. We all, we all respect Rick Glaser up in the house. You know, he was very concerned about the eight to nine million gallons of water that could be getting diverted from the Cape Fear to the Neuse River, should that move forward. And now, if we take another million out and we don't put it back, and we have the capacity to do it, I think we need to ask them, would they be willing to tie it to the sewer system? Because they said they have the capacity. And I think that would eliminate 90% of the complaints, the feathers, the truck traffic. That's not a big deal, really, is it's the water quality, you know, right there by the Cape Fear River, which is our biggest asset. So I would like to put that in there, that we consider they actually tie into the existing sewer system that is existing in the industrial park.
Did that resource be made available?
Yeah, it be made available, and that they use it. They use it. They don't use the spray fields. They use the PWC sewer system. That's something to think about.
Mr. Arp.
Mr. Mayor, just two things. One, point of clarification, it states the agreement may include other terms as negotiated. Who would be the negotiator?
That would be between the city, I would expect that it would involve the city manager. May also involve members of the Economic Development Alliance, but certainly from the city's perspective, I would expect the manager would be involved in that.
All right, well, thank you. Then I would just, I would encourage us, based on what Mr. Moan just shared, that that would be part of other terms as negotiated, that we negotiate to see if that's a feasible way for us to move forward with the treatment of the wastewater.
All right, counsel, any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is a seven to three vote, with council members Crisp, Davy, and Moan voting against. Those voting in favor are council members Jensen, Wright, Arp, Robertson, Colvin, Hurst, Thank you very much. Item 9.02 is our stormwater program update.
Good evening. I am Greg Case, and the city stormwater manager, for those of you who may not know me. I have been asked to come tonight and just give a brief update on the stormwater program. Wanted to let you know we'd be talking about some of the program milestones of the history, so to speak, talking about the MPDES water quality permit that is issued to the city by the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Talk briefly about infrastructure needs and benefits, you've heard those before, and give you a little bit of information about project updates, particularly those that have been recently accomplished, and then just touch on revenue and expenditures. Back in 1995 is when the city really got into the stormwater business from a stormwater quality standpoint. It was a result of the Clean Water Act. We had always done drainage to some degree, but when the Clean Water Act came along, it required us to meet certain permit regulations that we were mandated to do. Unfortunately, it was an unfunded mandate, and so the city and the county at that time were in the permit together and decided to implement a stormwater utility as a funding mechanism for that purpose. The utility only funded water quality to begin with. That was the portion, you know, from the permit. It stayed that way until 2007. We had done a few things regarding maintenance in the interim, but in 2007, the city council at that time decided we need to do something about drainage. They had, in the early 2000s, we had a lot of rain, it seems like, a lot of demand from the public to do something regarding flooding and so forth. So in 2007, they did do a fee adjustment in the stormwater fee to help take care of some of the burden of some of those large projects. At that time, they were concerned, well, we're talking about problems that already exist. What are we going to do about future problems? So staff was charged with working with stakeholders at the time to come and develop an ordinance that would control stormwater and take care of adverse effects of too much stormwater and so forth. We came up with that in 2008, and council adopted it at that time. In 2009, the county was able to be released from the permit due to annexations by the city, and most of the urban area became city. So the county was released by Deener, so it's been just a city utility since that point. In 2011, council was still eager to address drainage projects, capital projects. For that reason, they wanted to do so in an accelerated manner and voted to allow the issuance of stormwater revenue bonds. We were able to get about $10.5 million for that, and have put that to good use in completing some stormwater projects. So I think we were able to get at least 10 out of that. 2013 came a new water quality permit from Deener, and because of that, we had increased regulations, more things to do, so to speak, as a result of that permit. Those things obviously have expenses tied to them, so we had an increased expense from that standpoint. And 2014, as you remember, last year, there was a modest fee increase to help with some of those expenses, both quality and quantity. to help with some of those expenses, both quality and quantity. As you can see, the permit requires a number of things. Just talking a little bit about public education involvement. You have a stormwater advisory board. That's part of the public involvement, public education. There's no better way to stop stormwater pollution than to stop it at the source. And educating the public on that is the primary way to do that. We also deal with illegal discharges, the detection and elimination of those, controlling runoff from construction sites, various requirements on stormwater controls, the best management practices you've heard of. We also are involved in municipal housekeeping. It's a requirement of the permit. If we don't keep our own house clean and in order, we can't expect the public to keep their house in order. So we do a number of things there, as you see. We obviously inspect our system all the time to check for any kind of pollution or impending failure. So we're always, you know, concerned about that. The permit is very important. I can't stress the importance of it enough. Unfortunately, it's sort of a non-tangible thing. When you talk about water quality, we're talking about it with the chickens earlier. But I mean, it's an everyday occurrence in our environment, water quality issues. Unfortunately, you can look at water sometime. You really, it looks clean, but do you know if it's clean? And so the permit, I can't stress the importance of it enough. And complying with the permit, as you can see in the presentation and in your notes, there are some fairly hefty fines regarding non-compliance. And I won't go through those, but those are in your presentation, just to make you aware of that, the importance of that. Talking about projects in particular, you can see, since two thousand and nine, we've done a total of fifty-two projects. That is a very accelerated pace when compared to prior to two thousand and seven. We have really done some things to make things happen in terms of funding. And you have a list there of year by year is what's occurred. We also currently have eleven projects under design. Six are funded for design, nine funded for construction. And I just want to mention, we have almost eight hundred maintenance-related work orders per year. And the funding for those work orders has to come from our fees also. Just to sort of follow up on that, you know, even though we've done a lot of, a lot of things in the past, the issues still remain out there. We continue to become aware of new problems with flooding and nuisance, nuisance flooding and so forth, and particularly in residential subdivisions. So we continue to work toward that and have done a number of things in that regard, but it's a continuing problem. Obviously, improving public health and safety add to the quality of life and increased property values. I think we're all aware of that and all concerned about that. Want to, this is just a quick little map, a busy little map, unfortunately, but it shows you some of the projects we've completed and some we have pending. You can see a number of the red ones there in the center are ones that are yet to be funded. And they primarily grew out of a watershed study that we did. So, again, just a lot of needs. Just want to mention, we have our capital improvement plan projects. This is the five-year plan. Have about ten million dollars over the next five years. And of course, all of that is subject to funding. Just want to mention, you know, you may say, well, how do you become aware of these projects? And of course, we can become aware on a number of different areas. Obviously, we get calls from the public. And that's one of the primary ways. But at that point, when we get a call from the public, the problem's already discovered. We want to get into a mode where we can discover these before they become a problem. For that reason, we have done some neighborhood studies, some basin studies. And that will turn up some of these projects even before. So as you can see, in two thousand and seventeen, we've got two more watershed, watershed studies planned. Just want to touch on this right quickly. We're getting into the revenue side of things. This is similar to a chart that you all saw last year, and I'm just, I'm not going to a lot of detail on it. But essentially, this is the stormwater fees from the large cities around North Carolina. As you can see, we're toward the low end on that. Greensboro is less. But if you remember what I said last year, Greensboro just funds their water quality from their fee. They do not fund any capital improvements from their fee. So that's one reason why their fee is somewhat lower. So, and I will say, we just verified, the staff just verified this recently, and the average of these fees has gone up about thirty-five cent in the last twelve months. So if that gives you any indication of where things are heading. This is just a spreadsheet showing revenue projections. And we've got the current year there. I won't go into the other years. But the other years are sort of based on a funding plan that has been discussed before. So I'll let council just digest that as time allows. And then this is a chart that represents that spreadsheet. On the chart, you can see the horizontal blue line. That's essentially our revenues as they stand today. So you can see the need there for some other type of funding, if we're going to meet that level of work. So just wanted you to be aware of that as you consider things during the coming months. With that said, I can take any questions you may have.
We'll go to Mr. Hurst, then Mr. Crisp, then Mr. Colvin, then Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Without greater bifocals, I can't tell, but it appears that a lot of the red triangular unfunded are in District Five. And as you know, of the studies, twenty-ten studies, three of the major creeks, Branson, Hibberts, and Buckhead go right through District Five. And, of course, Lafayette Village Neighborhood Study. And that's the, I don't know about other council members' districts, but that's the greatest number of calls that I received is stormwater issues. So you can probably do that offline or at your convenience, but, and I know it's in the C I P, but if you can give me an update, how we are on the, on these projects from the studies? I'd appreciate it. I still get citizens' calls.
I can tell you, and this doesn't really tell you a lot, we've done some. There's a lot more to do. Again, I hate to get back to it, but it's somewhat subject to funding. So we can give you an update, though, that's more specific.
Thank you, Mr. Kason. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Mr. Crisp?
Go back to the chart where you showed the last chart you had with money figures, not that one, that one. Now, I'm looking at stormwater fees, and I'm looking at, am I looking at F Y fifteen? We did that. You're asking for twenty-five cent in sixteen, twenty-five cent in seventeen, twenty-five cent more in eighteen, and twenty-five cent more in nineteen. Is that, is that what you're asking the citizens to do?
Well, Mr. Crisp, I'm not asking for that. But if you recall, at the, one of the budget work sessions last year, we talked about that funding strategy.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to imply that that's what you're asking for, from my understanding. That's what we kind of planned out to do, right?
That was, that was a funding strategy that was discussed.
And the reason I bring it up, I want citizens to be informed that we're not where we need to be in terms of battling this stormwater problem.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, there's, when we have these big rains, there are areas that are flooded, and I, you know. And I just want them to understand that the only way out of it is, we're probably gonna have to increase stormwater fees. That's just the bottom line. And I wanted them to see that because I wanted them to understand that we're looking at it. That's not to say it's gonna be done, because we have to approve each budget each year. But incrementally, what we're looking at is a plan to provide more revenue for stormwater because we're not where we need to be in terms of handling the problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that to the attention of our viewing and audience, that we've got some difficult days ahead in regards to handling stormwater problems.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mr. Colvin?
Mr. Kason, how you doing, sir? Can you go back to the previous slide with the fees?
That, that one?
Yes, sir. So basically, with the exception of Greensboro, can you explain that piece again? You said Greensboro doesn't fund any?
They do not fund any capital drainage projects from their, from their stormwater fee. The entire fee basically goes to water quality to meet the permit requirement.
So how do they fund their capital? Is it through the general fund?
Out of the general fund.
Okay. So that's a distorted figure. So other than that, if you take Greensboro out, then Fayetteville's fees would be lower than pretty much everyone else, right?
Yes, sir.
So I'm with Mr. Crisp. As we annexed a large part of what is now Fayetteville, the building standards were different when they, when these subdivisions were done, and so we're playing catch-up, right?
Yes, sir. We inherited some drainage problems.
Okay. And so I saw, you said a few years back, you made, you made a nice stride toward it with a bonding, a revenue bond package. How many projects were you able to do that year?
I believe we, I believe the number's ten that we did out of that. Now, you know, stormwater projects are expensive, so you don't get a lot for ten and a half million dollars, I believe it was.
And right now, how many projects are you averaging a year?
Per year?
Right, with the current amount of money that you have to address what you're doing. So ten million got you approximately ten projects back.
We have about, we have about two million that we can.
So maybe two projects?
Or one project. I mean, we have one coming up on Yankton Road, I think, is a little over two million dollars.
So do you think that the current, and I know this is probably not your area, but that very conservative fee increase, you think you'll ever get caught up at that pace?
At that pace, it will be a good while. And frankly, we seem to identify them almost as fast as we put the fix in place. So it's, and Fayetteville's no different than other cities in that regard. I mean, it's just an ongoing problem as you have more development, that kind of thing.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. Mr. Wright?
Yes, just want to thank you for the work you're doing there in stormwater. This is a specific problem because I get complaints all the time from this particular area over in Chestnut Hill. Are you familiar with that area or that project?
I am fairly familiar with Chestnut Hill, yes, sir. It's been a, been a problem for many, many years.
Yes, yeah. And I have inherited that problem in District Seven. And the people are very passionate about it. I went several times to, to inspect the area. And they do have some grave concerns out there. And I think, basically, it's a downhill thing. You got the streams. What, what are you guys looking at doing for that specific area? Or you, have you targeted, have you looked at that in any sense? Because it's becoming a greater problem as we go down the road. I don't know if it's funding or what.
Really, at this point, and I can't give you all the details, I'd have to talk with our engineering folks. But I know there's work being done to possibly increase the number of outlets on some of the cul-de-sacs in that area. Some of those houses are down at the bottom of the cul-de-sac. Their rear yard is right on the creek, so to speak, so there's not a lot of buffer there. And when that, when we have heavy rains, the water jumps or gets out of the banks and starts encroaching on those residents.
Really going into their homes and their basements as well.
It's a, it's not a good situation. You're right.
I wish we could kind of crank that up and maybe look at that as making it a priority because it's really damaging the homes in that area at this point. I'll, if I can talk to you offline another time.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, I really appreciate you and Rusty. Y'all have gone with me to some sites and looked at some areas. And there's one thing about Mother Nature, she's in charge. I have thought in my own mind, just for information, you might, you might elaborate on this, is do we need to look at somehow moving stormwater to the Public Works Commission? See, and they do so many lines, so many lines run along with the stormwater. I mean, you know, the law areas, they know how to run their pipe based upon the way Mother Nature runs her water. And that's the way they set their pipes. So I'm wondering how much better, if you think any at all, they would be at stormwater than the current structure that we have in, in the city government.
That's a, that's a loaded question.
Well, we would make sure you go with him on it if you got a job.
It's hard to say. Some of the North Carolina cities I'm aware of have their stormwater located within their public water utilities department. But those departments are under the city. They're not separate as they are here, so.
Is that what's happening in Greensboro, maybe? You don't know? You're not sure?
I, I believe that is what's happening in Greensboro.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Kason. Good evening. Thanks for your presentation tonight. I've been, I've been dealing with a property owner, owner, a commercial property owner who's a friend who happens to be in Council Member Hurst's district, in between Breeze Wood Avenue and Rayford Road. And the question I would ask is, as we're dealing with stormwater, there's a component of it that's ours. And then there's a component of stormwater that belongs to D O T, N C D O T. So can you just speak briefly to how we're integrated with N C D O T and how N C D O T is taking efforts to increase stormwater capacity based on their roadways?
Well.
And the Corps of Engineers?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I can speak adequately on D O T. I mean, they, they have master plans and long-term plans and so forth. And we try to, you know, we meet with them, we try to integrate our problems with their problems and try to come up with solutions. We've got some things scheduled right now on a situation like that. But I'm familiar with the property you're talking about. And I know that D O T has been very informed on the issues regarding the Rayford, Rayford Road side of that property. So, I mean, they're, they are aware of it. They, I think they have some plans for it. They're not immediate plans, but.
Here's what I would share, and no offense intended, but, you know, talk is cheap. And, and the problem is, you know, a lot of the stormwater issues that we've inherited are D O T, you know, roads, that the water is not being properly handled on those roads. And then you have it runoff into our, to our stormwater systems. So, so the issue, I mean, we, unless we get full synchronization with D O T, we can't solve this problem. Is that a correct statement?
I'd say that is fairly accurate. Yes, sir.
Okay. And I appreciate your efforts on that property that I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arp. Did I miss anyone? Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Kason.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, item nine point zero-three is the interlocal agreement with Cumberland County Schools regarding a red light camera program. Mr. Bauer?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Just a brief presentation. I'll do my best to get to your questions as quickly as possible. Two actions before the council tonight, and they really are closely intertwined. And that's the interlocal agreement with Cumberland County Schools to support a red light camera program. As the council is aware, we have a local bill that allows us to operate this system and allows us to enter this, into this interlocal agreement to cover some of the costs and share some of the revenues with our district, which is unique to Fayetteville. We also have a servered agreement with American Traffic Solutions, which is a partner with that. So we have really a three-party program, one that deals with the funding and another one that deals with the actual service provision. So just briefly, you know, the interlocal with the county is really one that talks about how how we operate the program from a financial perspective. All the revenue that is collected under this program by the Constitution must be given over to the district. But we have this opportunity for an interlocal agreement that allows them to agree, to share some of that revenue back to us to cover program costs. Now, that's tied to the length of the service agreement because this really is a three-legged stool that needs all three legs. Our service to support it, theirs to help us fund it, and the service provider to provide the service on a daily basis. So we really worked to try and make sure that all of these three, these two agreements, brought that three-legged stool into being and put it in place. The service agreement itself, we've picked ATS. ATS is the market leader at fifty-two percent. We have Mr. Mosby here, who's representing the company. They operate in Wilmington area, and he's here if you have any questions that go past my expertise, and he'll certainly step up to the mic and answer them for you. But our proposal here is to start off with at least ten intersections. We are working hard to make sure that those intersections become operational July first in our next fiscal year. We will also look at other intersections to see if we can go past ten. That was one of the things that this service provider excelled in, passed other proposals we had. Their willingness to take a look at actually providing more than ten intersections. So we'll take a look at the intersections in the community and see if we have an opportunity for greater coverage and greater support. It's a five-year term, and this is a fee per paid citation. So there isn't an incentive to write bad citations. Really, it is to, they have an opportunity to do quality control and a responsibility to do quality control, and they'll only get compensated when a citation is seen as valid by the person who is cited, and they actually pay that and collect that fine. They will provide a local office here in Fayetteville, and they'll man that office. So if anybody has any concerns, they want to take a look at a video of the transaction or the citation, they'll have an opportunity to do that at a local office here right in Fayetteville. And they have great Wi-Fi support. And they also, unlike the previous technology where we just had some photographs, we will have high-quality video of the entire transaction. So people actually will be able to watch their vehicle, may not be them driving it, but their vehicle move through the intersection and able to judge whether the violation is supported. This is a quick slide to sort of talk about the experience of ATS. As we've mentioned earlier, they're the largest one. They have a local experience in North Carolina, working in Wilmington for some time, and really have provided for us what is an end-to-end solution. We're doing our best to make sure that the impact on city operations is as little as possible. We will have to, of course, facilitate the contract and deal with the financial side. But we're really counting on the contractor to manage this program fairly independently. They will hire that local office, local person to do that, just they have in Wilmington. They'll do walk-ins, violations. If someone has a, if they want to appeal, we'll have an adjudication process. They'll allow them to appeal that, and they'll set that up through the local office or on the website. Just a quick look at the technology. It's all on one pole. And as I said, it has the 3D tracking radar, the cameras, the video cameras, and the strobe lights. It really helps capture the information. And it does use that high-definition video, which is a significant innovation from the previous time we operated this in the community. So the people will be able to get onto the website. They'll have the information that comes across on their citations. They'll be able to log on and actually take a look at the evidence that's been collected in their specific case. We have the ability to access that video in case there's other, something else may have been caught at an intersection. For three days, we'll be able to contact the vendor if the police has an interest in whether something might have been caught due to an investigation. We'll also be able to get that additional benefit from having those ten intersections under surveillance. This is just, I know you can't read this, but this gives you an idea of what a citation would look like. Hopefully, none of you will see this anytime in the near future. But if you did, of course, it wouldn't have Wilmington's logo at the top, but it'll look something like this. Lots of information, lots of resources for them to get additional information about the program, about the citation, and resources for them to either pay their fine or to get more information about the fine that's been issued. So again, two actions before the council tonight, the interlocal agreement and the service agreement with ATS. And this is the motion that we recommend. One, the little nuances here is we recommend that you authorize the city manager to execute the contract with ATS after the school board has acted. I've been working with their attorney to bring this forward to the school board. I believe they'll be doing that next week. Available for any questions you may have.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Bauer. We do have a couple. Mr. Arp?
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna make a motion, but since there's some other people who have some questions, I'm gonna hold off on that. But I do have a question for Mr. Bauer. Mr. Bauer, the, two things. One, the poles that were depicted that they would use, are those poles that they would erect or those poles that are currently in place?
Those are poles that would be erected just for the system.
Just for the system, okay. And then the second thing is, their system, I know that they operate in other states. They also operate in Wilmington. They comply with North Carolina DOT standards for timing, and so everything they do will be based on the law as, you know, approved by the North Carolina General Assembly.
That's correct. And of course, they will not have any ability to adjust the timing for any signals. There'll be no changes in timing just because it's a monitored intersection.
And just for our viewing public, the intent of these cameras is to deter bad behavior and to prevent accidents. I mean, these intersections will be fully advertised in advance. They'll be posting to notify citizens that they're entering an intersection that has red light cameras. It's not a "got you," is it?
No, it isn't. In fact, we actually have written in the contract that whenever we put up a new light, we do warning citations for the first seven days.
Okay.
So we'll make sure, we'll try and warn people, make sure they're aware that they're there.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Mr. Colvin?
Mr. Bauer, thank you for that. You said a couple of things that gets me excited in there. I heard "local" a couple of times, so I see that you made a couple of efforts to put some folks to work around here. But a couple of questions. One, would these camera systems interface with some of the city cameras or are they totally separate systems?
They are not integrated into our monitoring system, no. They are separate. They are operated by the contractor. But we will have access to their information should we request it.
Okay, so that was my question. So if there's an issue at one of these crash sites, then you can get to the information.
That's correct.
Second question is, can you explain what the appeal process is? So say, for instance, you know, I'm in the funeral business. If I'm going through a red light and some of the attendees of the service get caught with a red light camera, what's the appellate process in this?
Well, the first thing is, of course, contact the local office and take a look at the video. If the local office has the ability to just throw it out, if they see something like someone's following a procession, that was an issue we had last time. Because of the two cameras, it was a little bit hard for us to see whether someone was part of a procession or not. This will be easier with the video for us to catch that. And if you bring that up to the vendor, the vendor should just throw those out automatically. If they don't, then you can appeal. We'll set up a process. Last time, we used a couple of professors from one of our local universities as adjudicators, and they were able to appeal, and that adjudicator had the ability to throw it out on their own.
Okay. And the final question is, can you explain to the public what the cost-share arrangement will be with the school systems and with the fines?
Yes. So the fine is, of course, we have to bring this back to the council. We have to do a revision of our city code. Because our current fine is fifty dollars. The state legislature sets the fine at, under our local bill, at a hundred dollars. So we bring back that to the council in next month to change that. So the fine will be one hundred dollars per citation. All that money goes to the district. All the money that's collected goes to the district. The fee that the vendor gets is thirty-five dollars per paid citation. So we get invoiced for that, and we'd request that money back from the school district.
Is there a provision in there in reference to a late payment? Isn't it another hundred dollars?
Yes. And there are additional fees should something go to collections or go to a process where we have to file suit to collect it.
Mr. McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you might have answered part of one of my questions is about the hundred-dollar fine. I didn't know where we had set that. I know the particulars that came down from the state might have said that that might have been a maximum, or is that what we have to charge?
It says that that will be the fine.
It says that that will be the fine because I thought we had talked about it being seventy-five dollars and not a hundred bucks.
It actually sets it for seventy-five dollars through June thirtieth.
Of two thousand fifteen?
Of two thousand fifteen. And then goes up as of July one to one hundred dollars, two thousand fifteen.
Is that something we sent up or is that something they sent back to us?
A little bit of both, sir.
Okay. I don't remember us ever discussing that. That's why I'm asking. If you're making decisions for me, and I have not had an opportunity, I don't particularly care for folk to make my decisions. I need the administration to understand that. I don't abdicate, and I don't think that this council should abdicate their responsibilities because we talked about this, and we had, in fact, set seventy-five and how we got to a hundred. I'm just, you know, I'm a little curious if you're setting. Secondly, your presentation, why it looked good. I would have appreciated being able to read it before I got here today. And if management can assure as much as possible that I'm able to read documents before I get here. I'm scanning the whole audience. I'm trying to look at you rather than look at the document. So you'll have some attentiveness to the fact that I'm looking at you. But when you give me a document when I show up, then I have to focus on it more than I do on you, and I appreciate it. So if you would, make sure that I get a copy of this one. I certainly would appreciate that. I'm not trying to be hard on you, but it's what I need to make logical decisions.
I understand, sir.
That's all. It's just me. I may be a little slower than the rest of you, so I have to do my homework and be ready when I get here. I can't do mine when I get here, like everybody, maybe other people. I had a third question, but, Mr. Mayor, I think I've lost it, so I'll leave it at that.
We'll go to Mr. Wright, then if you remember it, we'll come back to you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bauer, I noticed you mentioned a five-year term. Can you explain the five-year term? What happens at the end of the five-year term?
Well, at the end of the five-year term, the contract ends. We'll have to start a process sometime before that period to decide whether council wants to continue the program. Based on council's direction, then when we have the opportunity to reissue requests or proposals, to go through the process of contract selection again and go back through the process to either decide to continue with this vendor or go with another vendor and continue.
So we do have an option to change vendors at the time or either do away the program if it's not working for it?
Certainly, certainly.
Okay. Do you have the numbers, when you're talking about percentage of a decrease of accidents that occur? Do you have that percentage? How, would red lights, how much would it decrease accidents?
Good evening. When we ran the program last time, we ran it from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and six. And during that time, we had an overall average decrease between twenty-seven and forty percent at the intersections. That included rear-end accidents, too, which the myth is that when you put them in, the rear-end accidents go up. We didn't experience that with our previous installation.
You said up to forty percent?
Yes, in some locations, in some locations, just on angle accidents, we experienced up to seventy-five percent decrease in angle crashes. But on average, it was between twenty and forty percent. Just depends on the year swings. We did a three-year before and then a six-year during installation and a three-year after crash analysis. And it depends on the intersection, but we averaged around thirty percent.
Well, now, the reason I ask that question for the listening audience, I just want people to know that we're not, you know, putting up lights to take their money or another way to raise money for the city or whatever like that or school system. But it actually helps in the safeguarding of our residents and bringing down accidents in the city. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We see it as a proactive tool in an effort to try and reduce crashes and red light running in the city. And, you know, if they don't run it, they don't get a ticket.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, I remember the third question.
Got number three.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. If another person is driving another person's car, and I guess the owner of the vehicle is who gets the ticket because you don't know who's driving the car, is there an option for that?
He's gone.
I mean, he's the engineer now. You're supposed to know all this.
Yes. Well, I ran the program last time. So last time, this time as in last time, they have an ability to transfer ownership of that citation. So if it was your car, and why for your friend was, your friend was driving it, and you said, "I was letting you borrow the car when you got that ticket," you can turn in an affidavit with the transfer of liability to that ticket, and then it'll go to our firm, ATS, and then they'll reissue that citation to that person and give them thirty days to pay it.
Well, the reason why I asked that question, too, maybe that was the loaded question that I asked tonight, is that I understand that there maybe should be some check block on the citation when it's sent to me that says that I can do that, that I have that option.
There is. That information's on the citation.
But I don't think we had it on there the last time. I think it was left off, was it?
We did.
It was on there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't know. I never got one. I hope I don't ever get one, but I'm just saying.
Yes, sir. It was on the citation previously.
People need to know their rights. We don't need to try to hide anything.
Yeah. Another reason we picked this firm, they have a great, they have a great website. It gives all that information right up front on the website, fantastic website. It tells you, hey, I want to peel it. I want to pay. I want to transfer. Click on the big buttons on the screen. They'll tell you what to do. They have a fantastic website.
Huh? I think they even had an affidavit available on the website. You can download and fill it out.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Chris?
Let me see if I got this correct for our viewing audience now. What this agreement will do is, obviously, will allow us, we'll put the red light cameras up, and any money that's exacted from violations will go to the school, and they will reimburse us for operating and maintenance expenses. Is that essentially right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, here's the question somebody asked me. Once I realize there's a red light, there's a camera at Riley Road and Morganton Road, and I get smart enough not to run that light, and so after that light is there for three months, that camera, nobody runs it, so there's no profit coming in for those lights, okay, in the long run, when people figure out where they are. A citizen asked me this. He said, "Okay, how do we pay ATS? How does, do we get stuck with, if there's not enough revenue coming into the school system for them to reimburse us for the operation and maintenance costs, how are we gonna handle that?"
Well, by contract, their fee is solely based on per paid citation. Now, part of their protection is that they get to agree on the intersections that are selected. So they do their own analysis based on, you know, they've done this across the nation, of what the productivity of those intersections will be.
Well, here's the question, just in, I'm just gonna put it out there.
Right.
If there's not enough money coming in for this program to pay for itself, is the city on the hook for five years?
We're on the hook for five years, but we're not on the hook for any additional fees. The fees that we pay are based on per paid citation.
Is the city on the hook to ATS to make sure they profit from this program?
No, we're not, sir.
Okay. That's what I want to get clear.
Now, we may look at if we have intersections where we've solved the problem. We may consider moving that infrastructure to a different intersection. But that'll be part of our conversation within.
I just don't want us to come up at the end of two years and there's no profit in this program, and then we have to go to the general fund because of the contract, okay? That's what I'm concerned about because that's what a citizen asked me.
Right, yeah.
All right.
Okay, well, good point, but to answer that citizen's concern, that's a valid concern. The intent is to achieve that, a change in behavior to where we don't need those. And so, Mr. Mayor, if I can, I would move that, and I want to thank the city council. I want to thank the county commissioners and the school board for being supportive of this. This was a collaborative effort.
Will you make that motion? I've got to ask Mr. Bauer one last question.
Okay.
Mr. Bauer, since these are their polls, have we considered negotiating using their polls for our license plate readers?
No, I haven't brought that conversation up with them at all.
Because they're going to be angled and positioned in just the right places for the police department and the new LPRs.
Yeah, I haven't had that conversation, sir. But you certainly can have that conversation.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I just wanted to thank the school system. I want to thank the Cumberland County Commissioners and everybody on the Joint Liaison Committee for supporting this initiative and the staff for the work. So with that, I would move that the council approve the interlocal agreement with the Cumberland County School Board regarding a red light camera program and approve a service contract with American Traffic Solutions Incorporated to install and operate a red light camera system.
Second by Mr. Hurst. Discussion on the item. Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Adam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Counsel item nine point zero four is authorization of condemnation of the parcels on Murkison Road. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. As you are aware, staff has been working to acquire the property for the Murkison Road Catalyst Site One. On January twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen, council adopted the resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to negotiate and acquire the property. The city has allocated one million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the acquisition phase of this project and to date, a total of five hundred and ninety thousand, thirty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cent has been expended. Staff has acquired fifty of the sixty-seven parcels identified. There are seventeen parcels left that need to be acquired and staff has made numerous attempts to negotiate settlement through letters, phone calls, and personal visits with no success. I'm going to pull up a map now. So you can see. Of the seventeen parcels, there are eight that have title issues that can only be cleared up through the city filing condemnation. They're shown in green on this map. There are a total of nine parcels that the city has been unable to reach an agreement to purchase with the owners. Those parcels are shown in blue. The parcels in repres- in red represent what the city has acquired to date. Also note that of the seventeen, there are four occupied houses, which consist of three rentals and one owner occupied, which the city is prepared to allot five thousand dollars in relocation expenses for each household. I've done an outline on this slide for the condemnation process, which begins with a letter to the property owner giving at least a thirty-day notice that the city will file the condemnation action after that time has passed. In a lot of cases, once this letter is received by the property owner, they will contact the city to negotiate and an agreement can be reached. If no agreement is reached, then a complaint is filed at the clerk's office along with just compensation. The property owner has a hundred and twenty days to answer and after that point, there are several dates set for trial, discovery, and mediation. The city then has ninety days to file a reply after the answer and the case is then heard by either a jury or a bench trial. A trial can determine the amount to be paid, the authority the city has to condemn, or both. On the next slide. You can see that I've identified the issues that correspond to the number on the map for informational purposes for each, for each parcel. Staff would like to have council adopt a resolution authorizing the procedures on the remaining parcels, which would allow us to receive clear title and continue with the acquisitions. The process would protect the property owners as a guardian ad litem would be appointed to represent the unknown interests that exist and allow us to move forward. This action is the only way for the city to receive a clear title on a portion of the remaining parcels so that we may move forward. Staff recommends we proceed with the process and request authorization to do so, enabling the acquisitions to be completed. Staff is ready for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Colvin?
Just a, just a brief question, uh, you know, I'm, uh, certainly glad to see some movement here. For, I, I heard you say you have something like five thousand allotted for relocation expenses. Now, in the event there are some, some residents that have to relocate and are charged a deposit with PWC, has any, any concessions been made with PWC for those specific cases where they may have been charged a deposit just to continue life as, as normal? Is there any, any, any provisions for something like that?
Mr. Sharp knows of some provisions.
There are currently no provisions for that. However, I'm assuming that Victor is going to attest to that we probably can make provisions for that, but as to date, that has not been discussed.
So, so, uh, what the five thousand dollars would be used for is, uh, or the cost that it may take for a person to move, which could include, uh, utility deposits, a deposit for rents and, uh, possibly some, uh, month's rent that will help stabilize a person, uh, in their move. Or it could be, uh, moving costs in terms of actually moving the furniture and that type of thing.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is if, if it's, we have a city-owned utility that someone may have to, to be required to pay a deposit for circumstance that they had no control over, is that something that we could see if there may be any, any possibilities there? I mean, five thousand sounds like a lot, but when you, when you're talking about paying a month and a half deposit on a new location, you, you're packing up a truck and family and that kind of thing. I mean, every, every dollar counts, so.
In, in the other moves that we have, uh, participated in, such as with the Hope Six, uh, redevelopment project, uh, it, we were able to cover those costs without, without any problems based on the, the funding that was provided, uh, to the resident.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Moan?
A question, if we go back to the slide that showed the seventeen, the, the status, if I remember, the last time we were briefed, the, um, the properties where there were, you know, estate or air problems, they were willing to go ahead and, and to sell to the city, but because of the, the legal issues, condemnation was the way to clear up the airs, you know, they couldn't, you know, locate some. Would that be true, ma'am, Attorney McDonald?
Yes, sir. Not for all, but for on your, on your map, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. That is true for.
Okay. And then the blue where there's no agreement, that's just where the, they haven't accepted the city's offer so far.
That is correct.
Okay. And just for something that council to consider, um, I, I think we should go after the condemnation to help clear up those with the title issues, uh, and then let the property owners in blue know that, you know, we're going through condemnation and if they can't come to an agreement within sixty days, that the condemnation for those properties come back. But I, I'm not willing to vote for all seventeen condemnations tonight, but I, I would be willing to support the, um, the ones where there's clear title issues where condemnation will legally clear that up. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Moan. Mr. Crisp?
I was really going to say essentially what Mr. Moan said. I'm just not comfortable with the condemnation on the ones in blue. I know the only way I'm understanding, Ms. McDonald, if I'm wrong, um, tell me, but I understand those that have title issues, probably the only way we're going to clear those up is via condemnation. And so I'm in principle opposed to condemnation, but in this case, I would vote readily for those in green, but I'm with Mr. Moan. I'm not prepared to go to condemnation proceedings on those in blue as yet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mayor Pro Tim Davy.
And may I add, especially, especially so since we really don't have a concrete plan for Catalyst One yet, okay? So, uh, that, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim. Mr. McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any potential? For, now, now, let me make sure I got this right. In the blue, there are how many renters and how many owners still there?
In the blue, there are two renters and one owner.
Oh, I thought it was three in one, but okay.
Well, one is not in blue. One is in green.
Oh, one is in green. Just got title issue, they're setting on some ad property, okay? Is there any potential for them to be able to move into an area, especially the renters, into an area like Hope Six? I don't know if they have vacancies or, or one of the newer places to improve their lot. You know, they're already renting, so.
In, in the other, um, relocations that we assisted with, we actually assisted the, uh, the tenant or the property owner with, uh, finding a, um, a, a day, a, a nice, uh, place to move in. So.
Yeah.
We would provide that assistance, but yes, those, if they are income eligible, we could work with those developments, uh, if they have vacancies, um, but certainly that would be one of our first offers, uh, because they are fairly new. Um, and it, sometimes though, uh, rather than going in something that's a multifamily unit, they desire to continue to live in a single-family residence, so we would follow that path if that was their desire.
But certainly you could help them with a little upward mobility. I think that's my real issues.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, and, well, I thank you back, answered the other question, you know, how many there were.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Colvin?
Mr. Sharp, this probably be more so down your line. Sorry to catch you when you just got comfortable. How long ago have we, did we first, did the city first start talking about Murkison Road redevelopment?
Well, um, I would say in two thousand eight is the, um, the year that the, um, plan was developed where the city did a, a land use study of the Murkison Road area and where the non-catalyst sites were identified. Uh, so I would say two thousand and eight. It could have started a little earlier with some other work with, uh, DOT in regards to, uh, Murkison Road, but for sure, the, um, land use plan was adopted in, in two thousand and eight.
Well, yeah, I th- I think it might be some things that predate that, that I, that I was familiar with. And how much money have we spent so far in this, uh, in this project? Acquiring properties and studies and that kind of thing? If you had to ballpark it, I understand you can't.
Not sure about the studies I make it, though. Planning, uh, the planning, the development services, I think were in charge of. I'm, I'm not sure on the studies.
How about on the property acquisitions so far?
A little over, what is it, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand?
So about a half a million dollars into this project. It's been going on for seven, almost eight years and we're still having hesitation or problems be, you know, because of this next step needing to be accomplished. Is that what you?
Right. Well, one of the, um, it was always identified in the catalyst site projects that, uh, one of the city's role would be the assembly of the, of the property itself, working with developers. And so in moving forward with this particular catalyst site, uh, we always knew that, uh, the city's role would be to assemble the land and so we started that.
And the last, last point I want to make, it's hard to sell a project like this to a developer if you have parcels scattered around a particular area versus the larger parcels. I mean, you have, what, thirty parcels in this area or forty, uh, the way it is now, uh, versus developers are looking for large tracks of land to typically put some type of commercial redevelopment or something on it, right?
Certainly, that makes it easier, um, for us to already have it assembled, uh, in one track.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. Mr. Wright?
Uh, yes, I just want to commend you on the, the work you have done in acquiring the properties in red so far. I know you guys have done a lot of work, a lot of footwork, uh, and all of that. Um, and a lot of the council has, uh, addressed some of the issues that I'm concerned about, but, uh, I'm hearing you saying in the blue, there's only one resident that's owner?
That is correct.
That one person that's an owner right now in the blue?
There.
That, that lives there.
There's one house in the blue that owns on parcel twelve.
Uh-huh.
There are two houses.
Right.
The owner lives in one and he rents the other house on his lot.
I, I got you. Um, I agree with councilman Colvin in that, um, when you're looking at industry or, uh, business or companies coming in on a large scale, they're looking for, um, a large, um, scale of land. And I, I, I just really think we need to go forward with this project, given the, uh, the length of time that we've been dealing with it and the vision that we, we want to set going forward, um, in making Fayetteville a more appealing place for, um, for companies to come. And so, um, that's what I wanted to say and thank you for, for the work that you're doing.
Mayor Pro Tim Davy?
Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate the discussion that continues to go on, um, about this area, um, by, by many community members. This has always been a, a hot topic when it comes to those community meetings and research and as we continue to develop, um, various parts and, and corridor area, I think this is a very vital location. So based on the discussion I've heard so far, I'm inclined to, to move with, um, authorizing condemnation on the remaining parcels from Murkison Road Catalyst Site One, um, with a, an addition to allow the, um, sixty days for the blue, um, location, but for it not to come back to council, but just to give them an additional sixty days.
Question?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by councilmember Colvin. And I just reset the light, so if you have a question in reference to the motion that is on the table, please press your buttons again. Mr. Crisp?
Yes, sir. I, I do, how do we come with sixty days? What, what is the time we give people for condemnation, Mrs. Isn't it a hundred and twenty days?
No, sir.
Go ahead.
If you'll go back to the slide, I, I think what I understood is the process starts with what's called a thirty-day letter. So what I was understanding the motion would be, would be that we would send the letter, but we would not actually file an action until sixty days have expired versus the thirty days.
Well, it says the property owner then has a hundred and twenty days to answer the complaint.
Once the lawsuit, the first process is to write them a letter which says, Dear Mr. Property Owner, we have called you, we've visited you, and thus far, we have been unable to reach an agreement. If we are unable to reach an agreement within thirty days, we may initiate a condemnation action. Once that complaint is filed and the deposit is made, then they have a hundred and twenty days to answer the complaint. But what I understood Ms. Davy's motion to pertain to was the notice about when we would file an action. So even though we would send them the letter, we would not initiate an action until after sixty days have expired versus the thirty days.
Okay. So the intent here of the motion is to get them off of it and so that we can negotiate some kind of an agreement with the city? Is that, is that your intended purpose?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mr. Moan?
Right. So the, the green, they would get the typical thirty-day notice, just the blue would be given the additional, so, uh, those blue property owners would, you know, they would say, hey, we will be, we will begin within, in sixty days if you cannot. But for the green, it's the, the thirty, which will help clear up some of the title issues, so I, I could support that.
Mr. McDougal, you didn't press your light again. Did you have a question?
No, I'm didn't, uh, I didn't press a button, but I'm just thinking now about the legitimacy of giving one thirty and one sixty. Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. City Attorney? They caucus in there. Sidebar.
Who's sharing the wisdom with whom?
Well, thank you, uh.
What we're doing is legal, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did agree with, uh, councilmember, uh, McDougal in terms of if we're going to give sixty days, let's just give the sixty days for everybody and not get into.
All right.
One group versus the other.
Would you like to amend that motion? Mayor Pro Tim?
I'll, I'll stack that. I will accept that friendly amendment from Bill Crisp.
Okay. So the motion has been properly made and seconded, seeing no further discussion, I would ask for your vote, please, counsel. Madam Clerk, again, that is unanimous.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Counsel, there's only one other motion to be made tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Listen, adjourn.
I don't want to go.
I'm with you, Bill.
I'm retired. I'm retired.